Aunt Patty's on the square. Park County's oldest antique mall with 22 years on the southeast corner of the square. We have 25 dealers who take great pride in stocking and maintaining their booths. In 7,500 square feet you can find almost everything from the smallest penknife to great jewelry, vintage coins, sports cards, dishes like Grandma had, all the way to a large piece of furniture. We're open seven days a week. Our hours are Monday through Saturday, 10 to 5, and Sunday noon to 5.
All right, first I approve the minutes from the 18th meeting.
I make a motion we approve the minutes for regular 18. And that is a typo here.
Okay.
2012 to...
Yeah, 2012 to...
We're good.
18.
So it's 2018.
He said 10,000.
Oh, 10.
My second motion of the day.
All in fair share?
Aye.
Okay. Second off, need to approve payroll amount of $185,965.42. And I always like to approve on the... To make sure people understand that on payroll and on claims, what we're signing when the commissioners approve and sign these payrolls, we are signing acknowledging the fact that this number that we are seeing and this number that we're signing off on is the number that will be used to pay payroll and the number that will be used to pay claims. Obviously, there's no way that the Board of Commissioners could know if these payrolls are right or not. We don't know if anybody worked overtime or if they missed a day or... We'd have no way of knowing that. So a lot of folks think that when we sign these, we are acknowledging that these are correct and that's what we are approving, and that's not the case. We are signing that this number, this number is going to be used to use payroll and that can't be changed and some other number be used to pay payroll or claims.
That being said, I make a motion we approve payroll in the amount of $185,965.42. Your second pick?
All in fair share?
Aye.
Okay. Got one sign here? No, the date. Second, third, and the last?
Second.
All right, and then acknowledge receipt of payroll claims accounts payable report in the amount of $52,978.63. And again, this is just saying that we have seen the payroll claims accounts, accounts payable report, and again, there's no way that we would know if those invoices are accurate or if that work was actually done or those people actually worked those hours. We are, we are signing off and we are confirming that that is the number that will be used by the county. So when the State Board of Accounts come, they will have our signature on what the number should have been, and it must coincide with that number that we signed off on.
I make a motion we acknowledge receipt of payroll claims accounts payable in the amount of $52,978.63. Can I also make a...
All in fair share?
Aye.
Then we do have claims in the amount of $690,371.97. It's a little larger than usual. While we're doing these things, just so you know, the courthouse will be open tonight, uh, tomorrow night for election night returns to come in. The clerk will have the, the building open just right after the time that the, the polling closes, so sometime between 6:00 and 7:00, the upstairs should be open for everybody that wants to come in and for the numbers to come in.
Are you done? I make a motion we approve claims in the amount of $690,371.97. I'm sorry.
All in fair share?
Aye.
We have a letter from John Cornell. I would like for our group to be put on the agenda for the commission meeting on Monday today. I represent the County Ministerial Association and the Park County Pastor's Prayer Network, and they are receiving permission to have a national day of prayer service on the steps and the lawn of the courthouse on Thursday, May 5th at 7:00 PM. We have approved that in the past with no issue, so I would make the motion that we approve the Park County Ministerial Association and the Pastor's Prayer Network to use the courthouse steps and lawn on May 5th at 7:00 PM for national day of prayer service.
And I'll second that.
All in fair share?
Aye.
Ralph Willis?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Go on up, have a seat, review it so we can hear you and see what you got.
Well, we got a problem. Did you hear about the problem down at Mansfield?
Which?
In the middle of the bridge?
No.
Okay. It started out that the guys were working on the bridge, okay? There were six of them.
Which guys, you mean counties?
The highway department.
Highway department, okay.
And...
Approximately how long ago?
Oh, it was last week.
Last week.
Last week, okay, go ahead.
And we took in, was sitting in there waiting, didn't bother us, and when we got ready to leave, one of the employees told her to go F herself.
Oh, geez.
That's unacceptable.
Oh, sure. Did you get a name?
No.
No.
And all five of them, I mean, I couldn't...
Can I?
Yeah. Explain more.
We were coming home from a doctor's appointment. We come through the covered bridge, there was like, they said, six of them down there, and so we came up and they were, I thought, filling in a hole. And so we stopped to sit, and one of them was standing, and then the other one that I thought was filling a hole got on his knees, then I seen he had a sledgehammer. Well, what he was doing was that he was sledgehammering, there's a spot there that breaks out every year. So anyway...
And he told us that's, "Bridge is not safe to go across."
What are we talking about? I thought you meant the covered bridge.
The covered bridge.
Mansfield.
Mansfield.
The covered bridge.
Yeah.
So anyway, um, he's, he stood there and he said, "They're just going to keep coming." And so I opened the door and I said, "If you guys didn't want us to come through here, why didn't you put a sign down at the other end?" And they said, "Well, we didn't know how bad it was." Okay, that's not my fault.
Yeah, I agree.
So anyway, um, he kept hammering, and that was okay because we was going to wait, but then this one guy walked off and he, he said, "F you," so...
God, geez.
Yeah, and so then when I, we came through, I rode down the window and I said, "You know, I don't like that F word." And I looked directly at him, he knew who it was. But my problem is, that's where the visitors come.
Oh, sure, it's just unacceptable. There's no way he justified that at all.
Right, so then he went to the office.
I went to the office, and he was in a meeting.
Randy was.
Randy was. And I told the secretary everything that was there and what was happening, and she said, "I'll give it to Randy." And I said, "Well, I have him call me in the morning because I want to talk to him." I've got no message whatsoever from anybody.
We'll find out what's, what's going on. He's not here, is he? He shouldn't be here later for a meeting, for, for the meeting, so we'll find out.
Well, and also why they were sledgehammering it, they said, and I don't know why, but that day I could hear it through the car very well, but they said, um, they only knew how dangerous this was. Well, if the bridge is that dangerous...
Sure, well, once they realized they were going to be there, I couldn't agree more. They should have gone back and blocked the road, he could have gone a different direction, but regardless, there's no excuse for that, so...
Yeah.
That's just...
Well, and I'm just thinking of visitors.
Yeah.
Who wants to come back to some place that's going to...
I understand, I understand. And I, um, you know, I can apologize that we had to go through that, but obviously we didn't do it either, but it's just unexcusable, there's just no way that we...
And I don't expect anybody to get fired.
I understand, I don't either, but...
No, I just think that they need to...
They need to know that it's not...
Yeah, that's not...
Yes, no.
Randy has dealt with that in the past. I'm surprised he didn't contact because he's pretty good about, about those types of things. He doesn't tolerate that either. And typically, if there is a punishment involved, not always, but if there is, it's a day or two days home suspension, no pay. I, I can't speak for him, what he will do, but we'll certainly address it with him. I hate that, but I really appreciate it because so many people endure those things and never say anything to people they need to say those to. We are the ones who need to know those things occur, and I appreciate you coming in for that.
When it happens, I do, I don't care.
I do too, that's the way it's got to be. You've got to go to source. If errors are made by employees, regardless of that, it is the employee's boss, whoever's in charge, their responsibility regardless of who did it and who said it, so Randy's going to have to deal with that. And we will, I, I can assure you that it will be taken care of. I don't know that, what the consequence will be, but I know there'll be something, but I do appreciate your...
That's up to you guys.
It's always disappointing to me, as, as disappointing to you it is, it's always that disappointing to me too. I hate to think that we have employees who have no more manners and no more sense of responsibility than that, that's, that's how it is.
Well, I was just thinking about the elderly lady who could not have backed out of that bridge.
Yeah, she's behind us and she couldn't back it.
Sure.
So...
Appreciate, sorry to have you feel that. We will, we'll find out.
I don't know if that bridge is that bad.
Someone will get in touch with you.
That, that is...
Whether it's us, Randy, or someone.
Every year, they're patching the same spot, and there is something going on under that bridge. And I don't know if somebody needs to check that out. I don't know who does that.
Typical, several of them, a lot of times ground holes get on that pavement.
Yeah, that's true.
And there's plenty of them.
And they'll dig, and then a hole will come through the bottom with the weight of a vehicle, and then...
Okay, well, I just know that they said...
I just wanted to make you aware of it.
How far only, how far away from the bridge itself was it?
We was in the bridge.
It's right there.
Yeah, where they were digging.
Right on...
On the edges.
Edges. There's a whole lot like that.
Ground holes we have.
But I couldn't figure out why they had six of them there.
Because... But you will hear from one of us, Randy, or one of us.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thanks.
All right, we have a letter from WTH.
Yes, that is a electronic map that some, that another customer would like to have a copy of electronic map. And I just need a same signature for the county to allow them to have that.
Okay.
There is a total fee of $750, and then the county gets a portion of that.
Yeah, it's 250, that says.
Yeah, so you just...
It's not too long.
Yes.
They agreed to this contract with WTH.
So you have a letter for us to sign?
Yes, I do.
So you guys okay with that then?
Yep. Motion, all in fair share, please approve the data agreement with WTH. And I'll second that.
Proceed all of us.
Jim has a sign.
I think it's one, don't you?
Yep.
One signature on it.
Jim has sent both those copies.
There you go. Should we vote on that? We made a motion, should we vote on it?
I agree the motion.
Any second, it's...
I didn't know we had to vote on it. I think we did, all in fair share. Now we have. And we have a letter from Marathon Pipeline.
Depth of cover, so the...
Sure, if you're personally through walking, you'll be using electronic locator to see how deep pipeline is. And then just report to the Secretary of Education.
Okay, so the next one is report, the report that I have sent into state every year. I also have to pay the entrance out to school every year, and we've already got the entrance paid, and I just need signatures on these documents so I can send it into state.
Okay. Is that that lost money account that you never miss?
The school interest is what it is. Yeah, but cannot be used for anything.
Anything, yeah, it's just sitting there for a time of the decade.
It just sits there forever and ever and ever until these congressional districts would go away.
$36,644.
Yep.
Had my, about a third of a mile back, back. Okay. We approved last time the contracts with Matt Steckly of course, the $14,000 for the, $34,000 from not from C, 34 for the, for, we're seeing all the projects, and then the $12,000 I think it was for the study and the RFPs on this TUCO?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so I've got those, so I will sign those. I didn't bring them in today, but we already approved those, we'll make sure. We do have to make a, accept a change on one of the bids, the bids on the, I believe it's the flush valve, I don't think it's a bar, but one of the other of those, that bid came in in April, and now, it was April of last year, so now this April, a year later, prices have gone up on it, and it's a $10,000 increase on a $140,000 job, so...
I think I remember him saying that there was a possibility it would increase, but he was going to try to get them as...
Yeah.
Hold it as tight as he could.
And actually did, because they weren't wanting more than that, but he had agreed and proposed to us the $10,000.
We was aware of that with the meeting we had.
So we just need a motion to accept that... What's it called? What kind of changes, that was the word for that? Change order. A change order, yeah, yeah. So we need to accept that change order.
So if that's your motion, I'll second it.
Okay, all in fair share? Okay, then I will sign all of his contracts for all those jobs and get them underway.
I did get back with him and give him all the contacts on the siding.
Oh, good. It'll be interesting to see how that comes out.
They actually produce it in Waterloo, Indiana.
Okay. Let me check, I don't think I have any old business, but let me check. Oh, yes, yes, we got a, we got a letter from Partnership here in Cindy, I'm not sure which hat she had on, she wears so many, but this is from Kim Harris. She's with the Attorney General Todd Rakita. She's the Outbeats representative, and she's wanting to set up an office someplace in the county for one day, just to have a place where residents can come, whether it be for unclaimed property that they have or other issues with, with Todd Rakita. So we just need to authorize her to use a county facility like this, this one for that time period, just to make sure that it's all covered by insurance or there be kind of a problem. So I make the motion that we authorize Attorney General Todd Rakita's office to use this facility with Cindy's direction as to where they should be for one day, yet undetermined what day that will be from 10 to 1:00 PM.
And I'll second that.
All in fair share?
Aye.
So Cindy, up to you, what are they, they get?
I'll just let her know that you're, you're with that.
Okay.
Whatever works out with you and Chris.
Let me see if I got anything in here, all their old business here real quick. Okay, I okayed Don, Don was concerned about it, but I went ahead and okayed him, and actually I guess we don't, doesn't need our okay, I just want to make you aware of that. He's going to be taking vacation, which Don never does, but he's going to be taking probably 10 days, he's leaving May 5th, and the yard will need to be mowed probably while he is gone, so he has hired someone to mow, the person's going to use their equipment and do the mowing while in his absence, so I just want to make sure that you guys are aware of that. We don't need a motion for everything, just, because I just made, but I just want you to make sure you're aware that, that there would be someone else mowing. Yeah, while he's gone, yeah. And we did get the American Rescue Plan report, I say we, Cindy and Laura worked on that, got that report sent in prior to the date, and that has all been certified then and designated as revenue replacement in dollars, and so that report is done. You guys have any old business?
I had that RX Protect Plan, they'd given me a copy of their contract. I left during the middle of this conversation, so I'm not certain what the knowledge was, but the fees on it, when I left, my understanding was these fees were going to be 33% out of whatever the savings was, but the contract's kind of confusing in that regard, so I guess when they sent us the final contract, I think there's some changes they need to make.
Want them to come back? Nick will come back, we want to talk to him.
Yeah, I, I would like to talk to him because it's kind of, it has parts in there that says 33%, but then it also has a part in there where it indicates that client shall twice monthly pay for the actual cost of the MOLP logistic Services and once monthly or quarterly, as filled by our pharmacy partner, 33% of the savings generated. And that's in the second part of their services agreement, but in the first part it has the 33% only, so I think it's kind of clear.
It's not saying 33%, the savings, 33% period.
Yeah. Well, it's saying 33% of the savings, but it's also saying they're going to bill us twice monthly for something else that's actual cost.
Okay, that's, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, so I'd like to kind of...
Will you check your calendar and see, will you be available the 16th, next meeting? Will you be here?
Yeah, I'll be here in the next meeting if he comes.
You okay if we, and notify him and ask him if I'll come back on the 16th then?
Yeah, I just kind of, and then there's another part that has a typo in it, but adds to the percentage, it says 30%, but it's supposed to say 33%, which I think he indicated this was edited or a draft or something.
We change those, make those errors sometime to see if you're paying attention, see if you're catching those things, and you're doing okay so far.
It was a fun read, thanks for that.
Yeah, sure it was, yeah. Sorry we got you, buddy.
That, that was the only thing I had.
Okay. That, that program of course helps, not with all pharmacies, but of those on that, on that list.
List, 40, I'll work on this.
Yeah, big, big savings. And we already have one person using the, the orthopedic process, and that's going to be a great savings for the county on coverage and savings for the employees, so that's going to work out very well. They are, Stunt and Still is working on the same type of plan for cardiology things, so we'll get those... Oh, sorry. I'll get back there later. That's all I have for, so if you guys don't have any old business, we'll move on. Sheriff will not be here today. Randy not here yet? Randy?
Yep.
Yeah, come on up, will you? How are you?
All right, how are you?
Good. Now, excuse me. I can't, I don't want to take this down, turn it down so quickly. Before we, before we get into it, I don't want to waste their time either, Willis is here, came in, he left a message for you with Janie and wanted you to call him back.
I tried calling twice.
Oh, you did try to call him twice? Okay. All right, well, didn't get through to him anyway. Are you aware of what they're talking about, how the situation was, and have you dealt with the person that they're responsible, do you know who it was?
Well, I had four guys down there, please.
They thought six?
There was. Maybe it was.
Okay.
I guess it was six. And they all said nothing, nobody said anything like that.
See, that's what, that's what always comes into, it's just always...
Typical.
His, yeah, he says, she says kind of thing, I'm not surprised with that at all. And that always puts Randy in a really tough spot too. If you could identify who that was, even if you could, it'd still be a, he said, she said, it didn't happen.
Well, he acted like a boss, you know, first boss. He was telling him to get stools and stuff like that.
I don't, I, I looked at him, if I looked at him again, I could tell you who it was, but that's not, I don't want him to get fired.
I understand.
I just know that other people that come from a different county or something and, you know...
I understand.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm certainly not, and apologies for them or acceptance for them on any case, but I've had those things with other, other employees where somebody, that somebody did something and I just wasn't there, I don't know, I didn't hear, you know, and, and so...
I do know that there was at least two standing by that did hear and say that, so...
As, as much as anything, did you question why they didn't put signs up?
I did.
We did. I'm asking Randy.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Why they didn't put signs up.
Well, I didn't think he was going to be there that long, thought he was going to fill that, just fill that hole in.
Yeah, I'm going to set the incident.
But it turned out to be a little more of a deal, and I don't think they had signs with him.
Ground hole, under their parole?
I don't know, it could be.
Okay.
They even told me that they even said, "Give us a few minutes, we'll get things out of the way or you can go on through them."
They did.
They did?
They did, and then the guy that was standing there to the one that was pounding said, "They're just going to keep coming." And that's why I, I opened the door and said, "If you didn't want us to come through here, why didn't you put a sign at the stand?" And they said, "Well, we didn't know it was going to be so bad." And if you knew how bad it was, you wouldn't want to be sitting here.
And those things, I mean, I can understand that happening, you're going to jump out, fix the hole, go down the road, but it builds, and now you got some, I understand that error, but there's no excuse for using the language you used with you at the...
No, there was none.
There's no excuse for that.
I mean, I, I didn't do that to him, I just was asking him why they didn't put a sign.
And they can say it didn't happen, and if, if there were two others beside that person, then three of them are lying, it's just that simple. Trouble is, there's been a lot of way in the world Randy can prove that that's a lie.
I understand that.
I didn't tell him that, if that happened, that's not appropriate.
Yeah, and I, and I know you've dealt with that before with some of them, they just say it didn't happen, and now, now what do you do?
And, and there was even a young man, he was overweight, he got in the truck and moved the truck, and as then they let us go through, he even waved, and I waved at him.
Nice.
You know?
Waited on me.
Yeah, but...
We weren't in there, or...
No, we weren't.
Yeah, I've had it even go the other way, I had, actually it was a preacher, actually, who used that word with highway workers because they wouldn't go mow in front of his place because they, we, we just put new pavement down, they weren't going to drive the tractor on that new pavement yet.
Sure.
He used that, this preacher used that word on them, so I, I went to him and asked about that, and he denied it, but he had somebody with him that, I went and asked them, and they said, "Well, yeah, yeah, I did," and so, you know, who, who do you believe? That's why it goes down here.
Right, if you're going to say it, you might as well claim it, and when I rode down the window, I said, "I don't like that F word."
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate it, I have no doubt that happened, I have no doubt, you have other things to do today than come make this up, so...
That's exactly right.
I understand, I have no doubt in my mind that that occurred.
I just don't want some little old woman going through there and having the same problem.
I understand.
You know, they're coming down here for fun.
Yeah. Well, hopefully at least they realize somebody was aware and it got back to Randy, so maybe that will make a difference next time, who knows? Maybe not.
Yeah.
You know how unfortunate life is today with a lot of, a lot of people.
Yep. Well, thank you.
Wish I had a better answer for you.
Well, at least you listened.
Anytime, it's all we're here for.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys. You dropped something there when you stood up?
Oh, did I? Oh, that's my mask.
Okay, Randy, what you got? Oh, another interruption before you go. You work on Isabelle today? That's what he said, that's great, it's pretty quick, I just called you today about that, you did, good.
I think a couple, three trucks about there, about 11:30 and 12:00 or something like that.
Three crews out there.
Great. That's only the one one I've had a lot of complaints about, it seemed like just all of a sudden.
Well, we had that one patched before.
Yeah, we patched it once, right?
One of our first ones was patched, it was just too cold.
Do we need to get that on our list for paving, between crossings sometimes, is it that bad?
I heard, yeah.
Well, I was going to say, I would say it's one of the worst ones.
No, it's not one of them.
There is a stretch there right by the hill, coming down that hill, that could be, maybe west or something where a quarter of a mile could be good, because that's, that'll just beat you up when you go through there, and it's been patched so much and patch over patch, but the rest of Isabelle, I would say is terribly bad compared to other roads, usually, like I said, I've been on...
Marshall roads.
Marshall roads are mess too, but.
Especially north of Marshall, well, south too.
Got any good news for us?
No.
Not this time of year. Did y'all get a seat? The, the Janie, uh, emailed you the annual operation?
Yeah, I have a report.
Yes, she did. Here's a coffee for all of you.
We still have about two hundred and some thousand left in the community crossings that we haven't approached yet. 'Cause we can get a million from the state. We got seven hundred and something. Do you have any projects of that realm that we could, we could go for?
No, we can't get that now.
Second round again.
Second round.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, yeah.
No, it was small.
Yeah, so we got any projects that size? We can't get any more than that, we're only allowed to get a million from them, but.
No, you can still ask for another million.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, we'll ask for another million.
Okay.
I mean, up to whatever your projects are, but.
Yeah.
Up to a million.
Then, um, nope. Nope, we have to do it too. Okay, we'll, we'll just work on that for next time. We need to ask for more. We don't need to limit to just our sheriffs now. We can ask for the whole million and match our, match our share on top of that many from them, so we need to make sure we go for the full, full thing. But it's not a million counting our match, it's a million period from, from that fund and then we get that on top. So we'll work on that next time. Okay.
If you guys don't have any questions on that, I'll put you there.
You have a motion to approve?
Four point nine million is what we get. It's almost five million is what we get for. For maintenance, which includes bridge.
Okay, you got any questions on it?
No, I don't.
Motion to approve.
Accept the annual operational report from, uh, to the highway department.
And I'll second that.
All fair share.
I didn't know, well, you're still in the reading.
Well, that's what I, I was just always, always in my mind, I'm taking four million is what we get for roads, but it's about five million. But that includes the cover of bridges and, uh, we don't use any, uh, we don't, we don't use any general fund money, nothing like wages or anything. Some kind of.
Even insurance. Even the insurance. We, we maintain ourselves.
Sort of highway.
Yeah. Randy, we need that. Is she in, uh, Laura?
Yeah, Laura needs to sign that. We need to, uh, go show you.
Oh, I got Randy.
We got a copy, then we got two copies.
Okay.
So our wages and insurance, everything paid out of the highway funds and, well. Yeah, see, that's where.
Have to maintain that fifty percent, you know, that's.
Well, that's where, yeah, you go back, go to, we get five hundred dollars to do road repair. A lot of that's used for operational costs.
Yes.
Not actually for materials that go on the road, so.
Okay, what else you got?
Uh, of course, you're probably all aware, we got seven hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-two cents. All of our projects were accepted. Last grant, Venzat Road, Fallen Rock Road, nine hundred south, they're all paid.
Okay, so everybody started, though?
Yeah.
From last year.
Way he talked, he's gonna be gone a week and then come back, gone a week, come back.
Real fast, uh, Rocky Fort Lake, is that this year's or next year's?
Well, hopefully it'll be this summer, 'cause I'm gonna get stuff ready.
I mean, is it on this money we got now or the, or the new one?
We just got.
Just got, that's what I thought, okay.
Going to get.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought.
And haven't got yet.
Okay.
But we're, we'll probably have the, uh, bid package to sign next meeting.
Great. That one really is bad.
Speaking of that, I noticed they was now done a pretty good job getting roads ready, they're bridged and I have talked to two of the homeowners, they're gonna trim their own trees.
Okay.
Where they're coming clear out, just truck height. Uh, one of them I have not been able to make contact with, uh, Browns, they have those, there's about six or seven evergreens there and they plant them too close to the road and they, they're brushing the top of cars and they're almost.
Is that on one, it was high street from Berson Road to Cook Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have not been able to make contact with them about doing, trimming something off.
That's where the concrete blocks, the rocks are at?
Nope, nope, this is one street back, the one you're talking about. It goes also to Cook Street.
Okay.
Uh, that's, uh.
Cali Street?
Yeah, I think so.
Back north of the.
Yeah.
Oh, Cafet County.
But I'll try again this week to make contact with them. And I don't mind going out and trimming, I just didn't want somebody shooting at me if I was trimming their trees, but like I say, they're almost, well, you think they're almost halfway on the road, but. The others I got in touch with, they said they would go ahead and take the limbs off theirself and take care of them. What are we looking at time wise? Do you know when that's coming?
I don't know for sure. I think he was gonna start there, but we didn't have our, I wanted to get part of it.
Well, they, they trimmed the berms off the side. They did do a real good job on them. It's very happy with what they done on the end.
We don't, there's a lot of prep work on that, I saw the save some on the prep.
Did you get a chance to look at that, uh, gentleman on the Cobuff Road? Talked about.
Yeah, I did.
Did something need cleaned out?
Yeah, we'll clean it out when we get the grade all back.
Okay.
It's all leaves, it's not brush.
Oh, really, okay.
Um, but.
Okay, we'll take care of it.
Cleaned out.
Okay.
We'll put some, uh, material over his pipe.
Okay.
It's, it's been bare for quite a while and we'll go and do that.
Alright, good, I appreciate it. I'll let him know. Any timeframe?
No.
This summer?
Cause I don't know whenever the.
This summer sometime would be there.
Yeah.
Okay.
The grade all's up to Indianapolis. Been a little dark. Looked out, I think, it's not, they don't have to take the house off, but just, uh, um, O-rings. So I think they can get to everything without taking the upper structure off.
Good.
So that saves some money.
Your granddaughter looked, uh, really nice at the prom the other night. I didn't realize you were that old. You really are an old guy.
Yeah, but I'm quite as old as you.
I know.
Your granddaughter looked very nice too.
She did, yeah.
They all did, yeah.
Well, yeah, granddaughters are going to prom. How's that even possible?
Oh, I know.
Hope I don't break a hip on the way out of my truck for a while.
Yeah, you're going to Ivy, or Holden Center Thursday night?
Uh-uh.
Hannah's gonna graduate from the, co- Ivy Tech college?
Ivy Tech, yeah.
I, we're not aware of anything that she's doing. We're gonna be gone, so I'm not going anywhere.
God, it was like forty students or something?
Something like that, quite a few.
Wow.
Graduating from Ivy Tech.
That's great.
Out of high school.
That's great. We, we have several kids who do that, get that first or second year out.
Mm-hmm, that's what Hannah tried to do. I did get a phone call too from, uh, Lauren Hooper Gardner about over on twelve hundred. Said something about it was a, uh, cost share, double chip and seal. John Mace would have been involved in it, uh, you know anything? Or was that before your time? Way he talked, it was quite some time ago.
Yeah, it's been a long time ago.
Yeah, so he just called me and said it was totally falling apart and I'm sure you're aware of it.
It's, we need to go back and patch again, that's why. An early road if we patched.
Yeah, I'll just.
It was just too cold.
I'll give him a call when, the Cindy wanna get home and tell him that it will get patched.
And we gotta go back to eleven hundred east and, and lead a road.
I think it's over there, probably pretty close to that rear row bridge, I think it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How's your staffing, are you staffed?
Uh, not quite all the way, but.
All the truck drivers that you need or you missing truck driver?
Well, missing some truck drivers, but I got two now that's, don't have C D L yet. So they just, you know, have to reach a couple of C D L drivers to.
Take them around?
Take them out.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Is, is this, uh, what's this going to do for guys getting C D L'd? Didn't the state just pass that as of February something that they could no longer just go take their test and get their permit or on that?
Yeah, they take that school.
Have to take the school.
What, forty-five hundred dollars or something like that?
Yeah, that kinda threw a wrench in things.
There are entities that will help pay for that, if not pay for it altogether, so probably need to talk to, uh.
And there, I think there's some way you can send them to the state.
Mm-hmm. Work one is one of the things that will pay for that, that school, before they changed the price now. They may not be so.
The state's, they're training their own people and they will take on some from the counties, I believe, too.
That'd be great.
Okay, yeah, we probably need to see that because it's gonna make, the burden is gonna be even worse on us to get them now because before they go take their test, if they got their permit, then you basically test it out other than the driving test.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's all I have unless you guys have anything else, Morgan.
So next week we'll have, uh, next meeting we'll have, uh, contracts for the, uh, projects then.
Advertisement for bids.
Yeah, bids, I mean, not, yeah, contracts, bids. Okay, well, sounds exciting.
And we're gonna have a contract signed within dot, within two months and gotta have bids within four months.
Okay.
If I get everything in about two months.
Okay, appreciate it. Hang in there.
Alrighty.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Take care.
Have a good evening.
You public ladies got anything, uh, needing to tell or what? No? Job doesn't count, so I guess we can move on. Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
We adjourn, thanks.